I was wondering if that was going to ask Laurie Simonson. And you said, no, it's actually.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
You're not clicking the link?
What's your advice? Yeah, click or no click?
My advice, go fast and take chances.
Spam or no spam?
Catch him the last.
I have one of the songs.
Yeah.
Four. Seven hours later, I have three assignments that are ninety-two days overdue.
Guilt, guilt, guilt apply. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Jeff, I really admire the way you interface with folks on Facebook. It's really on the whole.
Dana, can you hear us online?
I can hear friends online. I wanted to let you know that Christian is, is on his way. He was delayed in traffic returning from Denver, so he'll be a little late.
He's in the building.
Dana, just double checking, did you want me to facilitate this meeting?
That would be really helpful.
All right, happy to do it. Lori, Ty, anything else needed before we start? Okay, thank you. Thanks for getting all the tech set up. Okay, it is six oh two and we call for order this joint work session of March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. Roll call, please. Mayor Green.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas, here. Councilmember Best. Here, sorry, I'm. Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Edwards, here. Mayor Proton, five. Here. And Councilmember Nalay, here, hi. Okay, at this time, we'd open it up for public comments on items not on the agenda. Is anyone ready? I speak, okay, go ahead, Steve, you have three minutes.
Well, we're watching the agenda, but I'm totally covered. Today, I tried to figure out, tried to email Representative Leder or Vanessa Wilson, who was at a police chief that I talked to. Lately, not from her job. And when I looked it up online, it seemed like the law firm split into two, uh, three different entities, and the principles are two separate ones. And I couldn't communicate with the one because some kind of security message came up on the computer. So I communicated with the other and as private news, and I said, I would like to let her know that you need a sheriff, I mean, a police chief here and to contact me and respond to it. So hopefully you can hear back in a minute and hopefully she'll be interested in working here.
Thank you, Steve. Would anyone else in person or online like to make public comment?
I do actually have a quick one bouncing off what you said. I've been reaching out to.
Would you mind stating your name?
I'm Sheriff Ryan, the Sheriff's Office. I was just gonna say, I have reached out to a few people that some had an interest in Chief of Police from different areas, but wondering where to post again, so that I can apply.
Um, I think we'll, we'll have staff follow up with you on that one, unless anyone knows offhand. Yeah, like Administrator Simonson, follow up. Yeah, and thank you both for your beauty of this. Anyone online? Okay. In that case, we will move on to the topic at hand tonight, which is a joint work session regarding the Letna Lake County Regional Housing Authority. Uh, so we've got city council here along with county commissioners and the director of the Regional Housing Authority, Jack Wheelham. Thank you all for making time for this and joining and putting together some materials and take it away.
Okay. Okay.
Hello, my pleasure.
All right, um, yeah, thanks for scheduling us and taking the time. Uh, we, I think the main goal out of this evening is to just get through the points and kind of plant seeds of some expectations of at least the discussion and understanding where that discussion and some decision points maybe need to happen between the city, county, and the housing authority. So first on our agenda, uh, we wanted to mention, and you had pulled a comment from the tourism panel chair um, last Tuesday, I think, was that last Tuesday? Okay, today's Tuesday, week ago, yep. Um, regarding a request to, uh, invest in the administration of two A funds. Very appreciative of Alice's efforts to get that kind of sorted out and inquire and get compliance and all of that. Uh, she, she had come to the housing authority and assessed for support, which we were happy to provide um, to the extent of encouraging the city, uh, to invest in the administration and kind of look at that uh, pretty deliberately. Um, I don't know, so yes, the housing authority also supports that request and your attention on that. I know I also had brought up a timeline of potentially recapturing, um, lost revenues and we didn't discuss that. And that's a bit of a different beast, but, um, all of that, that. Uh, I guess I'll also ask since last Tuesday, uh, has there been any discussion or any progress on the cities? Attention to the two A collections and compliance.
So I believe where we left the last Tuesday was that, um, city administrator Lori Simonson and company, we're gonna look into if we have a mechanism through our, um, lodging revs platform to, to help with some of that. And so Lori, are you online there?
Yeah, I can, uh, so, yes, when we met with Ms. Tharp, that was the plan. And since then, we've had, um, internal meetings to discuss collections. And, you know, the suggestion that came up in the initial meeting with Ms. Tharp was to just write to all the lodging establishments and basically say, you know, gosh, are you sure you paid all your revenue? Which is more a dart board approach than a tailored approach. And so then we looked into our software, which is lodging revs on the collection side. And they do indicate that they have ability to help you with your collections. So underreporting and zero reporting on collections. And so, um, we are setting up a meeting with them to find out if we are able to utilize their services to do that, rather than just send a letter to the lodging establishments and say, gosh, are you sure you paid us what you think you should have? Because I think that's probably in a net, maybe a little bit, but maybe not as much as where we had pinpointed data to say, you know, I'm hoping that lodging revs has the ability with public data to identify a reason why you would, um, contact someone and say, looks like you've underreported, or it looks like you reported zero and you should have been reporting something. I have my own ideas about that public data. I don't really wanna put it out in the public, but I, I think there should be some public data that would enable us to do that. And so, um, I've asked Andrew Cummins, our administrative assistant, to set that meeting up and make that a priority. So that is where we are. I, if you go to lodging revs website, they offer that service. And so we just need to make sure that it's something that we can utilize. And, you know, here's, here's the thing about the, the collections too, is that we don't know that we haven't collected what is due. That's our problem, is that we don't have data saying, here's who owes us and here's how much they owe. We're just speculating that we didn't collect as much revenue as we think we should have is, and we need more data at this point.
Thank you, Lori. And, and so there are kind of two items in that, which is one, trying to check if we have collected twenty twenty-two revenue that, to check if we undercollected in twenty twenty-two. The other is ensuring the administrative capacity that we're collecting moving forward, collecting the right amounts, helping, uh, owners know how to report and what amounts to report. So that, it sounds like those tools might work for either or both of those, but you won't know until that meeting with lodging revs, right?
Yeah, that's the whole point, is I think that's what they're saying, is that they're able to help you going forward as, as well. And we know that we, you know, we're coming up on the ability, the end of the year, to collect whatever it was that we didn't collect in twenty twenty-two. So we understand that part, that there, that's time sensitive.
And that, that time cutoff is, is December thirty-first?
That's my understanding.
Thank you.
I guess I'm, sorry, if I may, just add, um, appreciate that, that's, that's helpful. And, uh, also in our experience with, you know, on, well, say onboarding or implementing software and thinking that there's all these modules that will do all these things for us. It has been our painful experience that we really need the people there to continue to monitor that and work with, um, the software. So just not to lose sight of that and understand if Lori comes back and says, you know, we can do this, but we still actually need somebody to pay attention to it, but that's.
This is Dana, and I, I would say, I think we need to clarify our processes before we start hiring people. We cannot create a new position that's not budgeted for. Um, and so we are left with having to solidify our processes. And that clarifies, that will clarify the roles of the two people who are currently running that program. Um, if we feel that at some point it's necessary to hire someone as a consultant to try to recoup those, uh, potential losses in twenty twenty-two, we could consider that, but we can't just create a, a new budgeted position outside of our budgeting season.
Right, and that's one of the things that's been the stressors on this, is that, you know, this is prior to my arrival, but there was no planning put in place to implement two A on the city end, zero. So this was handed off to our finance director as an additional duty, and as you all know, she was overwhelmed as it was. So, you know, had there been a better plan in place to implement two A after a passage, someone should have flagged it and said, hey, you know, this is gonna take this many hours a month when we start this process. And then, because I remember I wasn't even on board yet in my first city council meeting, everybody scratching their heads and saying, gosh, we didn't really even effectively communicate to the, uh, lodging properties that they need to collect this tax. And it was a scramble to try and do that, whereas the one message that, or messages were sent out through many revs, but not everyone was aware of it. So we're playing catch-up from the start without the resources to do it. And so I appreciate, you know, that everybody wants to see the revenue, but no one invested, you know, at the start in looking at how anybody would put that process together. And so that's where we're playing catch-up with, you know, our previous finance director being overwhelmed and our new finance director, um, getting on her feet. So it hasn't been the smoothest rollout, to be honest.
Yeah, thanks, Lori, and, and I do recall, I think we maybe the first month that it was implemented, the system wasn't in place. So I believe the city just let that one go.
It was voluntary payment.
It was voluntary, yeah.
So we did collect some revenue, but not all of it.
Yeah. Um, Sarah, does that answer your question pretty well?
Mm-hmm.
Great, so I'd pass it back then to Sarah and Jackie for. Where do you want to go next, moving on?
Yeah, all right. Um, so next on our agenda, we have the Regional Housing Authority Organizational Chart Overview, and we just wanted to come and give, uh, an update on, uh, one of our last conversations that we had in our housing authority meeting. Um, this conversation stemmed from increasing complexities with the H-I-H-O-I, and I have the DOLA project, what we're now referring to as the county project, the twenty-two units that, uh, are meant to be built on the hospital land and the school district land. Um, so increasing complexities there, increasing, you know, demand and time of jackies and questions at the housing authority of like what, you know, what, what, what does that demand mean? And, and since the county is named on all of those grants and there was lack of financial and administrative support at the housing authority, um, we kind of brought up the idea and the concept of pulling out the project from under the housing authority. Jackie can speak to some research she did and communicating with folks about, you know, the, the spectrum of what housing authorities' roles are, are in different communities. Um, and so our conversation, uh, was based around the idea of pulling the project out from under the housing authority, um, having that live and having the, how the county, uh, look to hire, create job descriptions so that we can, well, we, through the grant program, we, we did hire a project manager, so Michael Yermin is doing, um, project managing that, those processes, um.
You've hired a contractor, not a full-time.
Yes, okay. Contracted with a project manager. Okay, um, and, uh, and so the, I wish we had more times of this to pass around, but this is, uh, one example of, uh, an organizational chart that Jackie found with the Gunnison Valley Regional Housing Authority. Uh, if you go on their website, they have a lot of promotion for, um, existing programming. And so we talked a lot about what our current capacity is as the housing authority, what our current funding support is from the city and county to do expected work. Um, and, uh, we will continue to discuss, you know, what that looks like. This is, this is meant to be kind of an word chart, although it's not.
Sarah, can I slow you down for one second?
Please, yeah.
Are these resources available to the people online?
Um, if we, I would have to pull up the organizational chart. I can log into Zoom. Would you pass that around, please? Uh, and I could share that.
So Dana and Lori.
Yeah.
And reference, thank you.
Um, I'm right. Lori, did you send the agenda presumably?
No.
Okay.
So I had, I had patience for a few minutes.
Did you forward that to me, please? Thank you.
And well, Sarah does that, and if, if we can't, we'll tell us, that's fine, but just to, I just wanna clarify something. So the development on the hospital parcels, um, you said it is no longer under the housing authority, or is it that you hired a contractor?
So when, when we, in developing the housing authority, the applications for this project kind of happened simultaneously. And the conversation felt natural in, oh, yes, the housing authority will lead and develop, like act as a developer and lead this project. Um, and through increasing complexities of the project, realizing like that is taking a huge amount of Jackie's time and questions from other housing authority members, well, what, what else are we doing? Well, not much if the board isn't able to be like working board and Jackie's time is being spent disproportionately on the project. Um, so the county started having conversations around, if they will, we need, eventually we'll have this project manager, because that's also written into the grant and the plan for the project. We'll have a project manager. Can we also hire staff to support the project? We are named on all the financial, you know, documentations of the project. Let's just have, let's just maybe call this the way that the city's working with the rail yard project. This is kind of, this can be a county's project that can separate duties. Does it make sense to separate those duties and, um, free up some capacity, open more capacity to the housing authority?
Okay, so Michael Yermin is the contractor overseeing that project, right?
Correct.
And then did you mention also hiring staff to support on that project?
Yes, so the county discussed hiring a couple of folks focused on housing, what those roles exactly, we haven't defined, what those job descriptions look like.
They're in the twenty-four budget.
Yeah, they are in our twenty-four budget.
And maybe within the housing authority or?
No. No, they'll be under the, so the county applied for a local planning capacity grant under top one, two, three. And under that grant, that's a staffing grant, it's for two years. Um, and the grant was written to have a planner who will help to fast-track affordable housing projects and also to have a housing staff, the person to, um, you know, help manage this project. One of the big reasons that this project also needed to go under the umbrella of the county is because the county wrote the application for, well, I wrote the application for the grant on behalf of the county, because the county was eligible to apply for the incentive grant. Um, and the reason that, um, the county is the administrator of the grant is because the county has the money to spend in advance of being reimbursed by the grant. So you report quarterly to DOLA and get reimbursed. The housing authority doesn't have the funding to spend one point eight million dollars on infrastructure. Um, and so that was, that was another big reason why naturally all these things have aligned to the county needing to manage this. In talking to other housing authorities, um, they struggled with the same, you know, questions. You know, what does the housing authority do? What, what do the, you know, what does the city do? What does the county do? Um, and I spoke to Summit County, um, Lori Best with the county of Breckenridge, and they said that they've been struggling for, you know, they're revamping their housing authority now um, because it just made no sense to have the developments running through the housing authority. We really need to go through the planning departments of whatever town, county they're in, because then they can move along faster. Um, and then the housing authority would be, um, the organization that would be, um, providing information on all the projects. Um, it would also be sourcing programs, down payment assistance, um, you know, home buyer programming, um, getting folks in line to be ready to buy houses, getting them to be qualified, getting them in the queue, and then also orchestrating and administering the lottery. And then once units are, you know, built, maintaining the units, maintaining resales, things like that. So there's a lot, um, it just seemed like, okay.
So the housing authority is involved, but not as the developer. Involved in information and.
But in Adam, we did have a discussion, um, at a housing authority meeting um, about this delineation of duties. And, uh, we decided that we should not be the developer. Um, many housing authorities aren't. Um, most of the housing authorities that do develop have, have their feet under them. And have been doing that for a long time and have the funding to do it, which we deny. So we decided to delineate the development to the county or city or whoever's doing it. And then we would act as kind of the periphery. Things that go on, managing the restrictions, um, administering lottery, um, making the programs available to people, things like that, instead of being the developer.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so. Thanks for adding clarity to that. Um, do you wanna keep going then with those?
Yes.
Documents.
So the, so I, for some reason, my computer's not letting me, it doesn't move back and forth, but I do know that it's Lori, so she will try to do that, to share via Zoom. Um.
I got really excited there.
Um, so what we discussed and we had up in kind of, if you can imagine, maybe some of these points as the bubbles, the top one is the regional, well, top one is the Regional Housing Authority, and that's built with city and county IGA and funds. And so from the housing authority then triples down what I think on these dark, but black, sorry, if I could, I guess I didn't print it out. Um, or is there a pile of extra? Okay, thanks. Um, the, what then falls under the housing authority? What are the, okay, that's supposed to be partner. What are the existing partner programs, um, that we have in the community, uh, that we can then promote and engage and increase access, uh, for individuals from our community too? So we've got the list of all these programs that exist. Um, and then another bullet might be community education and info. So we've just got that relative, you know, continuing to spread and promote and advocate for, um, the community guidelines and what we want to see in housing development across, you know, development interests and or, um, working with the school districts or other large employers to make sure that their leadership understands how they might be able to, uh, increase their staff engagements, uh, or employees engagement to benefit from these programs as well. Um, and then direct support and services, as Jackie kind of alluded to and mentioned, would be, um, part of actually qualifying buyers and working with folks through, um, the lottery and or offering funding in support of incentives for big development projects or, um, or otherwise tax breaks, you know, we, we partnered with CHT with the rail yard to be, you know, that miniscule ownership, which reduces the tax burden on them. And so those are some of the lists of the incentives, um, and the opportunities that the housing authority have available to offer. And so those are, those are kind of the three big buckets under, um, go ahead, Tim.
These. Programs and stuff listed on here would kind of be the bottom of that flow chart. So that's where board members step in and step up and start. You know, how to administer these programs.
Yes.
And so, and so, was that right?
Yeah, so we'd have, we'd have like three, I mean, we discussed having three buckets, the programs, the partner programs that we'd promote and help, and then the community, general community education, um, and then direct support services.
I think they're up and seeing that chart that went around is a laminated page, but we don't all have a copy of it.
And, and the housing authority has yet to, so we were gonna have a follow-up meeting, but we've had a lot of meetings. Um, so we haven't had a chance to solidify our organizational charts, and that will be coming. Um, but we just wanted to convey to everybody so that everybody understands what we're working on um, and that your voice is important, uh, as a part of this process.
Where does, where does the grant writing fit in? Because I think you've done the grant writing so far, right? So will that continue to be within the Regional Housing Authority, or does the county have other?
You know, it, it seems like for the, for the DOLA grants, um, it makes sense for that to fall under the county. For the same reasons as outlined before, but, um, the county has the, the funding to be able to administer, um, the grant, in other words, you know, pay the contractors as they're doing the work and then submit for reimbursement. Um, quarterly. Um, quarterly that county did hire a grant writer. Um, and so, um.
So are you getting out of, you personally getting out of the grant writing?
I, I don't know.
Well, I mean, the funds, the question also probably depends on like what the, what an ex grant is, like, I mean, part of the reason is that some, like, only county is eligible. Or, you know, so the county will do it.
Okay.
But if it's a program with the housing authorities running, then housing authority.
And, and so, and that has been how it's been happening, like the housing authority. So when I applied with the Lake County Community Fund for um, the congressional discretionary spending. Um, that was a housing authority um, grant, um, you know, but we closed our bank account. So we're probably gonna have to take the funding through the county because it made sense to have the county. Rather than the housing authority have an accountant and an audit and all of these added expenses. Um, cause other communities are doing it, you know, they let the county administer that part of it so that we have a, a budget set up under the county.
The only problem is, is that the housing authority is not debroosed. So that plays a big part in being able to get grants.
And we'll talk about that.
Yeah, yeah, we'll talk about that. Although I would like to maybe like. You talked about long-term funding too as one separate bullet point, but kind of folding that into this discussion of the organizational flow chart. It would be helpful. We wanna have this conversation sooner than later so that we share expectations and direction from the county and the city on. You know, agreeing on staffing levels for the housing authority, agreeing on the role and responsibility. So we're agreeing on like that lot, the county's dedicated the two years through this year, twenty twenty-three and twenty-four. In seed funding, um, I mean, that has been part of our conversations and expectation moving forward for the next two or three years. That the county would have to, um, and would be expected to uh, continue to fund the housing authority. Um, to do, to do these things. Um. And so that's, that's just again, you know, that long-term funding, I mean, that. The, the housing authorities, Jackie and your research, you know, they span from being a shell of an organization. Breckenridge has a shell of an organization which is um, there and administered and kind of triggered in some of these. One-off requests of incentivizing development, um, being partial owner, being a qualified applicant for. Different pots of funding, but that funding supports various specific projects of other jurisdictions potentially. So it, it spans anything from being a shell of an organization to provide those. Those advantages to being a developer. And so we kind of moved from the spectrum that was, we started closer at the development stage. Backing that off to what we can actually chew, um, and the reality of what um, was financially feasible and feasible with capacity.
What's an example of one of those more robust housing authorities that's doing development and programs, you know?
I think Boulder and Jefferson Counties. Um, they all certainly has, they have, they all has their N D program, I mean, there's.
Okay.
Um, but they also have um, significant funding and significant staffing. Um, yeah, to support that.
Okay.
Is it Vale or Eagle, but I mean, they sold a property like years ago. I mean, when you say significant, like tens of millions, right? Like.
Yeah, they had, um, so the Vale and deed executive director spoke at a housing conference I attended. And she said they had proposed twenty different ideas and then um, they were hoping to get a couple funded. Um, and they got all of them funded with millions of dollars. That is not our situation.
We'll get there.
And so that, you're showing us an example of a Gunnison housing authority.
Flow chart, just to give the visual of where you might.
Organization chart, sorry.
Yeah, these kind of, our top, our top tier together would be. City of Leadville, Lake County come together with the intergovernmental agreement. And then you have our, our R H A board of directors, our executive director. Likely another staff and then under there we have, again, this list, partner programs would be one bucket. Community education and info would be another bucket and then, and then direct and support and services um, is a third. So the county, the county finds value in those three areas and as I said, we've discussed continuing to fund. Um, the housing authority to further those, those areas. Um, and the housing authority would request that the city considers the same.
Okay. Um, at this time, are there like numbers to that proposal and request or would that be? Come, part of the ongoing conversation to figure out what those numbers are?
Yeah, I think that's part of the ongoing conversation.
Um, great, do you have, has there been any discussion around like how many staff? Um, like full-time staff makes sense or?
It really needs to be based on what the collective group decides, um, they wanna see for programming. And, you know, what's going to be offered through the housing authority. We're very fortunate that we have. Other organizations that are doing some of this work so that we don't need to tackle everything ourselves, that we can partner with these other organizations. So um, an example being that our section eight vouchers are handled through the other side area council of government. Um, so it's not something we need to duplicate or do. Um, they also offer the home buyer classes as does J K Housing Trust. Um, and so um, we, we partnered with D O H has um, a program to. Help with down payment assistance. That was gonna be a tremendous administrative burden um, to report on. And um, I don't know that we necessarily would have had the numbers to qualify for that program. And so we partnered with Impact Development Fund um, to be able to bring that to the community without having to. Manage it.
And I just wanna be super clear, the partner programs that exist, we are not saying that the housing authority will duplicate those. Or run any of those. The housing authority and the board would simply promote, uh, learn and understand what they are. And I hope, you know, I mean, I think council and the board, the commissioners and our staff will do the same. Um, understand what that inventory is and what is uh, available to folks in the community and, and promote those. And advocate for the attention of, of some of those programs in the county.
One, one other thought on answering that, I mean, it's not like a full answer at all, but like one of the most administrative burdensome things that. Probably would be in the housing authority's wheelhouse is actually administering like the lottery restrictions and whatever. It used to work in clients, but like, you know, client enforcement of those and yet that, I mean, how you set that up is we. As we already talked about it, like on Monday, like it can, it can get really complicated. And pretty administrative burdensome, so that, I mean, that could be something, since we have a lot of units. That we're administering the restrictions, like a firmship or rental would be, you know, that would be something that would really take some non-trivial steps.
Yeah.
So we're going to do a mock lottery, um, which I invite everybody to attend when I have uh, more information. The consultant that we're working with is going to help us with that so we can understand what that looks like.
We're hoping for pizza.
You tired of the salad?
Lottery and pizza, alright.
We're gonna be all off of him's housing.
Yeah. Believe you just call that a mockery.
So it seems like you would ultimately end up with, like, for this amount of money, we could have this many staff and do this kind of programs. For this amount of money, we could have this many staff and do this kind of programs.
Yes.
So we need to create that menu and then choose from the menu.
Yeah.
Yes, and I wonder, I mean, is it, can, is it possible to have kind of that like flow of. Perspective or conversation from city and county to housing authority to figure out. You know, what that appetite really looks like. Um, I, to Dana's point of, you know. Creating a new position and I wasn't suggesting the creation of a new position necessarily, that's for you all to decide what's necessary in the organization.
But this would dovetail with budgeting season and that kind of stuff, right?
Um, I think so, although, yeah, uh, uh, I mean, potentially. Earlier this year, if we figure out that we need that capacity, but well.
Hmm.
The, the county is dedicated the hundred thousand dollars. Um, and so we'll see what that gap might be with what is being contributed from the city.
And I could also imagine some of it having to be a bit nimble, like if we get a grant and it's like got a twenty percent match, like a lot of something you need. Whatever that was, you know, like, I mean, we, you know, discussing the grant application, I was thinking of the flow and stuff out, but. Like I could see it being like a little bit of a hard to predict. Number, well, because you just don't know what ingredients you get or. You know, discussions with some of the partners and how much the caps are.
Or like identifying programs, you know, like our, our dedication of some hundred thousand dollars to. A few of these programs already and just trying to emphasize and. Target preservation of housing stock, um, is that, but I guess that's a separate, that was the county's. Decision to contribute to that. Um, that probably isn't necessarily a request from the housing authority. But could be advocated for by the housing authority.
Is there anything on your radar right now as far as? The possible need or task for funding for positions prior to our budgeting season?
That's a Jackie question. Well, so, um, what, like I said, the, the county applied for that grant. Um, for housing position under the county, um, it really, it really just depends on these conversations. And what we end up, you know, deciding to do in terms of, you know, what programming we're gonna offer that our partners don't offer. Um, and, you know, and, and just capacity, you know, I'm, I'm looking forward very much so to. Um, sharing this with someone else. Cause there's.
Like at this point, could you hire another F T E with the funding that's there, for example?
Uh, yes, and so that's the, that's the intent is to hire another um, full-time person just to drive the, um, the project forward. Um, cause there's, there's a lot happening with.
Not the housing authority.
No, the county, the county hiring, so drive the project forward, building project.
Talking about the housing authority.
Where does the city's funds that we committed to?
Yeah, the board has to decide, I think, so the, the county and, and we haven't invoiced for that, so the um, city hasn't paid that yet, but the.
Right.
The city's dedicated funding, we have three hundred thousand dollars, um, you know, the board has to, it wasn't. Um, I, my understanding was it was not allocated specifically to um, an employee. Uh, or staffing, um, it could go to programming, it could go, so I think that the board has to make that decision.
Part of the discussion certainly was that, I mean, we, we asked for a line item budget. And part of the line item budget did include employee, so to just shift that to say that the board has both the city council member and a board member. To just shift that without that conversation with city council.
No, and that's, no, and that's fine, and city council can direct where they want that spending to go, I'm happy with that. Um, when I presented, um, our budget shortfall was on the project.
Yeah.
And also on um, staffing and we had discussions about, does it make sense to apply that funding, that one-time funding? To a staffing position if it's gonna go away. Um, so yes, I, I think it's time for city council to designate where they want that funding to go. Um, and I don't, I don't think anybody at the state law has a problem with that. There, there's lots. There's a lot, there's lots of places to spend it.
I just wanted to make sure that was the additional tension behind that, I don't wanna lose scope of. The fact that the, the initial assumption was there that it would be for part of the employment, we haven't had. Full in-depth conversation as council about it, hey, like we know about it, cause we're boards.
So we. Yeah, this is, this is Lori, I just wanted to say, it was, I mean, I think there was a lot of discussion about Jackie being overwhelmed. And needing help and my recollection is that that was a huge part of the reason behind. Authorizing that funding was that Jackie is overwhelmed and needed help and. You know, there's a push for that line item and actually to know that there was a position description and that that position would be coming quickly. So that Jackie could get help sooner rather than later, so. I think that was a big part of the discussion, I think a big part of uh, the impetus to give the money is my recollection.
And also at that discussion, I presented the budget for the project, both the twenty to twenty-two units and we have a. Um, you know, a, a deficit of six hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars on that project. We did get that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars um, from Brittany Patterson's office. Um, which is gonna go towards the project, so that's tremendous.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but this is, this is kind of a moving target, right? It's every day it's different. Um, and so whatever you decide, um, you want the funding to go towards, I think is fine with the group.
Well, can I, um, I may have a friend in North Carolina, local building, on the housing authority board. So my recollection could be off, um, but I think we had put a job description together, we wanted to do that. And then we said, we wanna make sure, you know, what the housing authority is gonna be when it grows up, and we put that on pause. Because we did not want to hire someone and then say, oh, never mind, we totally changed this job description. So I think that would be intense, um, because I also did not see Jackie say I had. Um, you guys are asking too much and you certainly could use, and had probably earned the support. But I think we felt like this board, well, I think it's gonna be, but actually originally, it would be prudent to. Figure out what we wanna be or we commit to another F T B and try and track that person.
I think that's a great point of why either a hire hasn't happened yet. And it was very, it was very urgent and then we kind of moved into like, what are we actually doing? What does that look like? So.
This is Dana, I'm sorry, but when people are off from the table, they're very hard to hear. Could somebody? Tell me A, who was speaking and give me a quick summary of what they said.
Sure, Dana, that was Dan Northcraft, he's on the housing authority board and he just brought up um, the point about the request. Uh, for the funding for staffing coming in and when we were kind of looking at what that job description might look like. We thought we really needed to know what the housing authority wanted to be when it grows up and, and so then that's where this. Contemplation and like figuring out what the roles of the housing authority actually would be, um, and realizing that the. That's when the conversations of, of kind of separating the scopes started happening and that is. Part of the reason why that hire has not happened yet.
Thank you.
Please.
And.
Thank you, Dan.
Sure, I think we also talked about, and I'm, I'm a little fuzzy if we finally said we're never, never doing development. I think we said it makes sense to let the county do this first one because they have more capacity, they already own the land, they got the grant. Um, and then when we said that, that also relieved, well, I don't wanna speak out of turn here, Jackie, but. I got the sense that that relieved some of the pressure on you, that you weren't, you know. The la, first and last line of defense on that grant and then we hired Michael as a consultant. So some of the workload that was associated with that project went down, so I think we also didn't feel. Jackie, welcome to correct me, I'm not saying you're not doing anything right now, but. It felt like there was, the world was not on fire quite as much as it had. So that's another reason that we have not moved forward with that.
So we've kind of gotten into funding and we could keep rolling with the C D boosting on the agenda before it.
Yeah, let's just do that really quickly. Um, so the um, housing authority was on the ballot. Um, last November for the reversing measure. Unfortunately, the language is. Um, it has to be um, legalese and uh, we were at the end of the ballot. After a lot of um, other ballot initiatives and I think people got into the habit of saying no. Um, and it's hard to understand what debruising the housing authority will do for the housing authority. Um, so at this time, first of all, I appreciate everybody being here on such short notice. Um, but I think one of the big things that we need to do is your circle of friends, if you can talk to your circle of friends and say, gosh, it'd be great if you could vote in favor of debruising the housing authority so that they can go after funding um to provide rentals, um, so our our project scope has changed. We weren't really sure what we were building, if it was gonna be a rental or for sale project, but because we have not been debruised and we cannot carry funding over from one year to another, um, we can't do a rental situation, so we have to pre-sell units, um, and that's just what it is, but we'd like to have this again on the ballot this year. Um, for those of you that don't know what debruising is, it's really hard to find a good definition. Um, when I Googled it, um, the A I co-pilot told me debruising in Colorado refers to the process of eliminate, eliminating the government spending limit imposed by a taxpayer bill of rights, um, and I think it also comes into play when you have um taxing powers, which the housing authority has, but has not gone to the ballot, has not been given commission from you know, the folks that created us, the city and the county, um, to add that as a ballot measure for a mill or for an increase um in the tax, uh, in the sales tax.
I see Dana's hand up.
Thanks Cisco, I I was just gonna put on my build a generation hat for a moment and say um, just at our recent board meeting, uh, the board did give preliminary approval to Christie Galarza and her board of active people to um advocate for the ballot measure. Um, they were very, very effective for the accommodations tax back in the day, and I have every confidence they'll be just as effective for this, so um I, there's quite a bit of activity in in the background building um for this ballot initiative moving forward. I'm optimistic about that.
Yeah, we, we, we really appreciate it, um, we, we, we didn't have enough outreach, I don't think, last year. Um, and it's, and it's a confusing topic, um, but I I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention that it will be on the ballot again. And um we're looking for everyone's support for it to make the housing authority more effective.
Great, any other questions or comments on debruising?
Tell everyone you know.
I talked to Greg Huawei and he said he was wanting to go door-to-door with the flyer and educate people.
That's exciting. I will, I will go with him. Uh, go separately with him.
He definitely needs more to do.
Negative slogan is always a little tricky, right? Either way, we could put a positive spin on it, rather than the debruising. So several of the ballot initiatives last year were atrociously worded, they were incredibly difficult to understand. It had a tax word and yes or no, and that's ninety percent of the people, that's all they saw. Of course, right in the middle of of the real estate taxes changing too, where the apparel was changing too. Is there a way on those initiatives that there can be a synopsis before all the legalese?
And 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 the blue book would be to have, to have something in the blue book would be wonderful.
It would be very important, because even even digging in and trying to understand some of those initiatives last year was
Well, and and I really appreciate when people would reach out and ask, but I'm like, oh, I'm so glad you called. Um, we, we only lost by, I think it ended up being eighteen votes, um, and so it's unfortunate. But um, I feel like in this room, you know, combined, more than that, many people. So I'm counting on your help.
No, absolutely, but yeah, some, some help with wording on those could work wonders.
Yeah, it was a, it was a frustrating situation, because the um we had to use what the attorney gave us, and it it's very hard to understand.
Has to be a way to have the attorney have a synopsis at the beginning, just that there's some non-legalese explanation before you get into the debt.
I I will ask that question.
And part of the problem last year was, is the fact that we didn't know we needed to debruise until
Last minute.
The last minute, so no, the whole ballot initiative was done very quickly and
Yeah.
in last minute, so.
So long-term funding, um, when we created the housing authority, it was um created very quickly with a two-year budget, um, so funding runs out for the housing authority at the end of twenty twenty-four. Um, and so we wanted to also bring that up today, um, that we need continued funding. My opinion, which doesn't matter, because I'm not on the board making decisions, but my opinion was always that I didn't feel like we were ready to go out to the ballot um for a a taxing initiative, until we had a success, until we had some some units built. And we had some uh marketing and ra- name recognition, so people understood what the difference was between the housing authority versus, the lead of the housing authority versus the housing coalition, so that there was just um some community support for what we were doing. But, that being said, we're funded through twenty twenty-four, and that's it.
And when you say we're funded through twenty twenty-four, does that include like accommodations tax funding? Because isn't that in perpetuity?
So, yeah, so the the two A um language indicated that it's dedicated for housing, but this was the budget that was adopted by the city and the county. Um, it was for twenty-three and twenty-four.
Yeah, uh, we agreed, uh, when we passed the two A funding to have it be temporary till twenty-four. Um, at the time of passing it with review, um, at the end of twenty-four to see if we want to continue using two A funds, which on regional housing authority. Um, so I think that's probably pending conversation, but we'll have towards budget season. Lori, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's absolutely right, so the the two A language indicates that the money would go, the percentage towards the um tourism, but then the rest, you know, the remainder goes to affordable housing. And so the decision was that that money we felt would go to the regional housing authority, but it could, it could go to quote-unquote affordable housing in whatever format it, so that's where it doesn't, the funding doesn't, through two A doesn't end, but the discussion needs to happen of what affordable housing, you know, do we want to use the funding for? Is a more accurate way to, I think, put it is, uh, council member Tharp is right, the the funding would continue in perpetuity as as long as, you know, you don't go back to the voters and and request that it not, but it, it could go to any affordable housing.
Again, what do we want to see the housing authority's role be in the spectrum of the Shell organization to like full-on developing and what we're willing to put behind it as the city and county to get there? Um, so I get, I mean, I guess I would say on the long term, it would be great for council to give the housing authority direction on where you want three hundred thousand dollars dedicated to be spent. Um, give us enough of a heads up of what the housing authority, what role you would like the housing authority to play, um, and how you plan to spend your two A dollars. Uh, and, yeah, give maybe Jackie updates on your twenty twenty-five budgeting plans as soon as you can start those conversations um in the year.
And may, I mean, maybe I was in there to add, I mean, I think, like, the point Jackie made, sorry, about like maybe not going to the voters for exercising our taxing authority until we have some like real successes on the ground to point to, that that makes sense to me.
Yeah.
But I think we, you know, that should be a collective discussion about when, if, if ever, I mean, like or when, like, is the right moment, um, versus you know, relying on annual appropriations, like grants and
Yeah, I mean, never mind for the housing authority and, but but like strategically for the community, there's only so much.
Yeah.
Like chunks of sales tax or right property that is really reasonable or or palatable to the voters.
Yeah.
Um, I think that's
Can I just quickly add, because I think, um, you know, in terms of you know, the funding for the three hundred thousand, like I I share Lori's recollection that it seemed like the principal focus was on hiring assistants for Jackie, um, I would say that for that and for future funding, the the part of the agreement between uh the city and the county and the housing authority to um have the authority prepare an annual budget. It would be helpful to loop the city in on that, and it, and and something like uh council member Luna Leo was saying about having a line item and um uh, an annual budget that makes sense would be helpful for council in providing the direction that you requested.
Should that budget be based on, should Jackie do that now, based on our current status, or will we get some like feedback on what the flow chart looks like and includes and?
I'm not sure how the flow chart plays into this discussion, but I think it would be helpful regarding the money that's already been committed, the additional money that's already been committed to the housing authority to see the current annual budget, um, I am not sure what schedule the housing authority is on their budgeting, um, but whatever exists currently would be helpful, um, and then just again, if if in the agreement, if they're to prepare that annually, we would like to be a recipient of that resulting budget in the future, for a future year, for like twenty twenty.
So it is a requirement for me to submit the budget to um the state. Um, and so that was the same information that was shared um with city and county. Um, but I am absolutely happy to do that, and I think it's important that everybody understand where we are, and as a, as a staff person, um, it would be nice to have some job security beyond this year.
It seems like we need to work on sequencing the schedule, because it seems, seems like you, you want some info from the city, like, what do we want the housing authority to do and look like? How much money are we willing to contribute, both through two A, potentially and potentially beyond? And uh, update on twenty twenty-five budgeting plans, but from that, then you could craft a budget that then would come, you would then propose it back to us and and you would maybe have feedback or comments.
And Jackie, I would say our current, our current I G A identifies, um, you know, in terms of your salary or two-year, like that's baked in there, and the city's contribution to that is already baked in there. I was talking about additional funding outside of that, 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 the extra stuff that was requested.
Yeah, and I was just, and I was just talking about the two A, the two A funding, um, since that does, that does go to my salary. I think that's a, if if that's a twenty-four decision, um, I think that matters, that is in the I G A also.
I don't think, I don't think your salary is uh is in question here.
Yeah, I I think my understanding was the additional two A fundings, I mean, we can certainly revisit the I G A. But what was committed through the initial I G A, through the, was it like the housing director or whatever? Um, I G A that we have between the county and the city was that your position specifically, which transformed under the new regional housing authority, um, I G A was funded in perpetuity by two A funds, obviously, we'd have to revisit that, but my, that's my understanding of how it is, I don't think, uh, as Mayor Green said, that's in question whatsoever, it's just really the extra additional funds. Unless I'm completely mistaken, but when I did that presentation to council, that's what it seemed that I saw under the I G A.
So would it be valuable tonight to put some dates on those, that type of sequencing, so that we can get that, those balls rolling, so that we have things prepared prior to budgeting season, or or if there's decisions that have to be made sooner than that, that would be good to know too, but Dan, Lori, does that, is that something we could do tonight, you think, is put some dates on? Like when we'll get certain info, then when we'll get a budget proposal back, stuff like that?
Can maybe the first conversation that happened between Lori and Jackie and Dana on the current budget? And then what, you guys can discuss that, and what?
I think that's a good idea, Sarah. And then if there are, like, further decision, we can bring that uh pretty rapidly before council.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a great place to start, I think knowing what the current money is intended for, or at least what the housing authority's thought is with that, and then uh, we can plan what the additional ask is, I think that's a good, I think that's a good plan.
Cool, so Lori, Dana, and Jackie will meet on that sequencing entire lineup. About anything else on long-term funding?
Thanks, is there, are we missing something? Um, so we're gonna, we're gonna talk about gap funding later, but um for the, for the different projects that are going on, but that's the only thing, we'll talk about that in a minute.
Cool.
I will say, I have been pretty vocal about this at the regional housing authority meetings, I uh do disagree with the philosophy of waiting uh to capture more funding, uh permanent funding specifically for staff, I think it's incredibly important to capture that earlier, or rather, later. Two A is a perfect example of funding that we capture that doesn't necessarily need to be tied to a success story. Um, it just needs to be properly ran through a proper campaign, um, and heavy advocacy. And I know that the city is currently working with um a newly established task force to discuss further, uh, or to have further discussions about sales tax with uh, in terms of recreation, it wouldn't be too far-fetched to say that's something that certainly should also be a part of conversation. If we do one sales tax increase in one year and try to do one in the next year, politically speaking, that's not gonna be the best odds uh for the upcoming one, um, as opposed to if we all do it um, in coordination with one another and in cohesion as grouped up items, so that's just my personal thoughts.
I agree. I wasn't clear when we formed a task force last week, what the plan was going forward to, to discuss those things, but I absolutely agree that um the task force should, could um involve a larger discussion of how to raise funds for more than just the recreation issue. Christian, that's really helpful to hear, because I think I had had too much of a county lens on it, where more of our revenue, actually, this is like my thing, I don't this isn't like a B O C C opinion, I think, but like, while I'm thinking about like our taxing decisions this year, we get more of our revenue proportionally from property tax, and we kind of or I, in my rationale, where we ended up on the budget, we made a relatively modest production in the mills so that we had budget headroom to put money into housing. And rather than, like, we did a lower mills more and gone to voters for housing or like supported a housing authority, taxing authority, but it's like, why, why do that? Like, when you can just have the revenue now.
I also think it should be on the next
I also think it should be on the next fifty dollars, because that's going to be a big turnout here.
Yeah, yeah, but just to say, yeah, that's an helpful sort of barrier in kind of different revenue streams from different.
Well, and I'll also add the counter, I mean, if the city wants to pursue sales tax funding, like to have that conversation about what the sales tax funding structure is currently, the city doesn't actually have sales tax collection. And so like, can we, do we discuss like actually making that clean in the city? Collecting their own sales tax to, you know, impose in the city limits and because when we've looked at sales tax, um, you know, through, say, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, right, and Chafee and Vision, and like, well, just pass this quarter cent sales tax. Like, well, that's great, but your budget projects, and this was four years ago, your budget projects eight million in revenues of sales tax. Ours is two point two, and so your quarter cent sales tax equals one point two million. That actually puts a dent in some initiative. When we have to levy three quarter, we have to levy three times as much to get that meaningful impact. And I am of the opinion that we only, like, we only have so we have a, the county sales tax is six, six point nine. So we only have one point one ish in my head, if eight is kind of our limit. Or what, you know, projecting and figuring out what the limit is for the, the, the community's appetite for that. And so I'm in my head, I'm parsing out like this one cent, you know, like where does this go? Which one thing does this go to? To supplant general fund dollars that are supporting it? And where does it make the biggest impact? And and uh, so that's, again, I would like to see if the city wants to pursue individual sales tax and city limits, I would love to see that separated and cleaned up before um, before adding, you know, uh, 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 another.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Commissioner Reg, do you mean cleaned up in the sense that the city would receive no tax through the county then?
I, I, I mean, to put it simply, like city could, if you wanna, if you wanna do a quarter cent sales tax, do a four and one quarter cent sales tax to actually collect what is being transferred to the city by the county's collection of sales tax. Capture, I'm not going to repeat that, so just leave it at that.
I, I, I understand the, the wanting to clean that up. I just think the practicality of having a four point two five percent sales tax pass is probably zero.
We don't want that, over here.
Well, maybe that is something we should leave to the task force for now, to keep discussing, but.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I think it's much more complicated, um, and much more impactful across various jurisdictions, um, than, than it might appear.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think one of the, um, and I think just, just to, to finish this conversation out is that, you know, there's the potential of a uh, citizen initiated um, petition that ends up on the ballot, whether or not we all agree that um, it should proceed if the, if the citizens decide to place it on the ballot, we may just end up with it. So I think that's why it's good to have these conversations.
Is that a municipal?
P V Swims.
I don't, no, I mean, cause I don't, I don't believe that that can happen countywide, but is that, can that happen in a municipal jurisdiction?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we can, we can assume that at this time.
Cause I don't think legally it can happen county, count, like in the county of the jurisdiction.
That, that's what I recall from the discussion before, and I was gonna say to, if anyone knows of a citizen-led uh, effort like that, it would be great to make sure they draft it, right?
That's why we're having a task force.
Yay. Thank you, Task Force.
We're gonna give them all capes.
I was gonna suggest, yeah, special T-shirts.
Y'all tell me if it does.
Is there a county rep on the task force? Can you let us know where we?
Yeah, the intention is to have a county.
The intention is.
Okay, so last week's meeting, uh, we passed a, what, ordinance resolution?
Resolution.
Task force, and we identified some key community partners, including the county.
Business owner.
Business owner, um, Chris Tyler.
Me, Christian. And a P V Swims representative.
So it's going to be a five-person. Tentatively five, if we need to increase that we can, but I think we all feel comfortable with some being the most maximum.
You have a revenue?
No, well, I think P V Swims has one, but we'll see what, we'll, we'll flush it all out with the task force.
Shall we move on to consideration of regional housing authority managing units long-term?
Please.
Yep.
So, um, the city purchased eight oh nine spruce, the county's purchased Elm Street um, as part of the organizational um, chart. Um, would there be an appetite for the city and the county to have the housing authority managing those units? Um, I think that as we develop units under the housing authority, um, it seems like that would be something to offer.
I mean, I can say this has certainly been something that I brought up to council before, I think prior to newer council. Um, but um, I, I don't think that we had a full-on discussion about it, but I certainly floated the idea of that being a potential future for us and the consideration we should have for long-term um, as a city, so. Um, it'd be interesting to see what the rest of council, the current council feels about that. I'm certainly in favor of that.
The two new developments have to be sold. They can't be rented, correct? Based on the current?
Correct.
So the only two things that you'd be managing would be eight oh nine spruce and
And the Elm Street.
And the active property.
And, and there's two properties, there's, there's five flex and a single family home.
So four units or four properties total?
Um, three, three, so the five unit, um, six nineteen, um, six thirty one, um, and then eight oh nine spruce.
Gotcha. Uh, and that would be the housing authority managing those rentals as opposed to having an outside party like Centennial managing this rental.
And it could be um, a revenue generator for the housing authority. Um, the housing authority could still charge um, for management of the units. Um, but it would be something that seems in line with offering programming. Um, it's certainly something the housing authority needs to talk about. Um, but we're trying to be very open about these conversations about what we want this organizational chart to look like, and that is something that seems appropriate to.
Very much be a positive marketing aspect as well. Again, I'd be for something like that, absolutely.
I would be for it, but I think that also ties into debruising, doesn't it?
Yes.
It would have to be debruised to be able to manage property, by the way, take them. Yeah.
I asked the question of the state, and they said if you don't have a ballot measure, um, I think that's mostly what they care about. But, um, yes.
But we would have the ballot measure in the back.
If, if a ballot measure is put forward for a sales tax increase, uh, we were only looking at debruising as the ballot measure. Um, and, and primarily that was, um, so that we could su- secure financing if we wanted to do a rental. Not, not this kind of rental project, but if we wanted the twenty-two units, if we wanted to finance them, um.
Go ahead. If you wanted to finance those and have them held as rental, you would see that. Now, your initial thought there was that if we don't have a ballot measure, that it would be okay to manage those units? Is that what you were?
Right, you know, it's so, it's, like I said, it's been very hard for me to get, um, anyone who is willing at the state to tell me anything. As, as do I searched, uh, Copilot A I, uh, for my debruising information tonight. Not, not coming directly from the state.
Well, I mean, it's revenue. You're gonna get a commission if you manage property. And you can only make so much revenue if you're not debruised.
Yeah, and I think if you budget for it, so if you budgeted the rents, um, then it's, it's just a matter of, um, giving back, yeah, funding that you didn't budget for.
Hmm, okay.
My understanding.
Well, then that makes it a little more complicated. I think it's important to just recognize that the goal is to debruise at the end of this year, and this conversation doesn't necessarily need to get more into complexities of that.
Yeah, just, just wanted to throw it out there as an option.
I, I would also say that something that I've learned and we've heard is that, you know, if you are actually generating revenue to support staffing to manage properties, there's like a threshold of what you would get you know, from an H O A fee or so, or something like that. And so sixty to eighty units is what I have in my head of like a reasonable cost that you're gonna, your revenue that you're gonna generate on top of managing that number to support a staff person. And I think again, though, like, we have to appreciate that if Jackie's or someone is managing five units, it's probably a disproportionate amount of time that she, they will be spending on managing units rather than like just relying on what's getting skimmed off from like that, those fees, and it will be an additional. You know, ju- just the active manage, an additional, an additional headache, not, not being supported by the units themselves, additional financial support from the city or county or whoever is asking for the management. Um, in my head, any potential Harrison Avenue development gives up, is kind of like my benchmark of, or milestone of potentially giving us the volume um, that might make it worthwhile.
Which, mind you, we already do pay, let's say consultants to run, um, spruce, for example.
Maybe, no, spruce, nope, absolutely.
And the county, I mean, we haven't fully decided what we are doing with them, so Ellen might not be, you know, that, that might not be a county's desire, uh, to hold on to that property.
Yeah, so to add, to elaborate on that, like, and this like really starts to hurt my brain, like on top of the previous conversation is, so and the county and I think the city, and we have like quite a lot of money tied up in ownership of a unit or units. That's great, but it would be interesting to see if we could sell those to, to, um, with a sort of some kind of de-restriction so that we can free up that, you know, some of that money. I mean, presumably, if we sell it for the de-restriction, we will, we'll take the loss, but that's the subsidy.
Put that money in, but then new order of rental, new construction.
Exactly, but then we can start like, you know, rotating that money rather than like locking it up once. Like my head just starts to hurt so much about like, who, so who would own it, who would manage it, who, like?
What is our goal? Like our goal isn't to own property, our goal is to put de-restrictions in place, so it's still, yeah, we have to be determined at the county.
And, and that's happening too. So as part of the strings attached with the Dola grant that helped purchase that property is that a de-restriction will be applied to the property, and that's been drafted. Um, so and.
Did my elaboration make sense, like about, yeah?
Yeah, as far as managing, I'm, go ahead.
Oh, just one quick question. I don't know, uh, the parameters on deed restrictions, but maybe someone does that. So the, the purpose of the eight oh nine spruce was to provide housing for, you know, the, the hierarchy of city employees, county, and then so forth, people who are working in our community. And it's worked so far. I think the only issue would be is a deed restriction that would require it to not just be sold at a certain price if it sells, but that, that the units would be available for rental to local employees? Is that a potential deed restriction?
Yes, it is possible, yes.
Yes, but I do, I do think eight oh nine spruce has its own complications around considering deed restriction, just personally, I don't. I, a- and, and please don't interpret our discussion about Elm Street to impose, like, our goal on Elm, the county's goal on Elm Street was to preserve housing and get a deed restriction. So we preserved housing in perpetuity. That's the conversation for council to have on what your goal is for eight oh nine spruce.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And to say, I mean, because we felt pretty strongly that like Elm would, we would either be scraped or turned into it would, it would seem pretty clear that it was not gonna return to the local inventory. So we just tried to hop in and see what happened.
All right, Dana's got her hand up.
Thank you, Cisco. Um, I'm just wondering, this is, this is just expressing my own ignorance, but with deed restriction and some of the um, some of the, the private information that may have to be exchanged between the potential homeowner or renter and the person holding the deed restriction with Cora considered, can the county do deed restriction, or would that be something that, say, like a, a separate governmental entity, you know, like the housing authority, sh- would have to manage?
No, any, any, that's, any public entity is subject to Cora, and all of those are, you know, confidential information will be redacted, but it's no different than, um, the confidential or sensitive information that we deal with with the, with the, with human services or that any other county jurisdiction, neighboring county or housing authority deals with. So there is no restriction there.
And the housing authorities.
Thank you.
The housing authority is also subject to Cora, um, so it's the same.
Thank you guys for clarifying that.
Well, my understanding of that, I guess we can just follow up with Chrissy on this, is that presentation uh, that we received for the Housing Coalition had different information on that and was pretty explicit as to some issues with county and municipality running deeds as opposed to, uh, regional housing authority deeds. Um, including, I'm pretty sure it was on the state website, but like I said, I can follow through with them, double check that. There was some serious concerns that I had when I did my research, the presentation to this city. And it was presented as a positive, not only from the state, um, but also from a previous uh, presentation that we had. I just forget from who at this moment, so I can just follow back through then, get that information.
So as far as the question about cities' appetites for housing authority managing eight oh nine spruce, um, is that something that as a board, the R H A still needs to kind of decide if they would want, if you'd want to do that?
The, the housing authority still needs to meet and have a discussion about what, um.
And, and then the city could.
Just wanted to see if there was
Yeah.
interest in that.
Yeah, I would just say from our perspective and limited perspective in I think absolutely having someone other than city staff manage the property is the way to go, and um, I just want to shout out to Amy Tate, who stepped up and is willing to manage the property uh, for us, because it is important to have a property manager other than the uh, whatever governmental entity owns the building. So if it, you know, if it becomes more effective to have it be the regional housing authority, I just think it has been fantastic what Amy Tate has stepped up and, and done, has taken a huge amount of work off of staff, because you know, our staff is not set up to be a property management company. And it didn't make any, it made sense for us to acquire the property and, and handle it as long as we did, but it certainly makes sense to have it professionally managed. So, uh, whether that's, you know, regional housing authority or someone else, it, it does make sense to have it professionally managed.
Are there any council members who feel like they would not want to consider that? I'm, I'm open to continuing to consider it once we add more detail, but is anyone not?
Absolutely.
Like, I'd just like to hear from the board if it doesn't make sense for the housing authority to manage. Like, I'd just like to hear from the board if it doesn't make sense for the housing authority to manage three units or five units, and they really need eighty to make it sustainable. I would just like to hear from the board and what they want to do.
Yeah, great. Can we move on to gap analysis or anything else for managing units?
Can I request a short break?
Oh, indeed.
Right. We're about a half hour behind. I mean, we're looking at eight thirty, so.
We're gonna go really fast.
I think it'll be quick.
We're gonna go really fast. I've got a major headache.
I hope you don't have a concussion or anything, because we could do five minutes for standard.
Only if other people want to as well. Yeah.
Okay.
Stretch.
Five minute break.
Jackie, there might be some ibuprofen in my desk in my office.
I appreciate you so much. I had four before I got in my car.
All right, if you need anymore, there's upstairs in the break room, there's a box of ibuprofen.
I think if I were to make it up the stairs, I would jump.
Well, Jackie said, send somebody else up there, because sometimes there's snacks too. So just send somebody else up there for you.
Jackie, do you need me to refer you to support system?
Right.
Don't make me worry about you, honey.
Have you had it since you fell?
No.
Wow.
Well, I hadn't, I had no, I had no, I didn't know there was any ice there, and I, um, so I didn't anticipate, right? And I just.
Yeah, you had to sit even more through fall and you just land on the back of your head.
And I had, um, I've had, um, you know, back if use anyway, and so I was just in the foundation of that, and witnesses, so witnesses, that's probably adding the most stress. My my neighbor's like, I heard someone fell at the the cycling.
Just so y'all know, you you are not on mute on the Zoom meeting, just in case.
Okay, unmuted, can everyone online hear us okay?
Yes.
Dana, Lori, can you hear us okay?
I can hear you, thank you.
Okay, well, we're gonna get started again and go ahead with gap analysis.
Um, so again, just wanna um, bring this up to everyone so that everyone is aware of these projects that are happening. Um, so JP Housing Trust has um, the Rura project um, where they're looking to bring twelve units. Um, a one bedroom is two hundred and sixty thousand, a two bedroom is three hundred and three thousand, a three bedroom is three hundred and sixty thousand. Um, I don't know what the situation will look like for that project in terms of gap financing. I know that they are restricted to a hundred percent AMI um, for those units. Um, so I would anticipate um, some gap funding, just.
And what do you mean by gap funding?
So so what it costs to build versus what someone pays for it.
Okay.
Um, and and what the difference is. So we're um, building affordable housing on our project. I can say we're anticipating, no, 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 on the next one, on on our project, the county, um, the twenty to twenty-two units. Um, we're anticipating a gap of seventy-five thousand dollars a door. Um, and I don't know, again, this is the first project, right? So we'll see what that ends up being. Um, as we're heading into the infrastructure um, piece of this, um, you know, we're already seeing a fifty percent increase on TAP fees. Um, and so I don't know how that's gonna translate across the whole project. I just wanted to mention it, um, that we have these projects coming, um, and for everyone to be aware.
So isn't part of it, Jackie, um, the price of the unit um, can differ from what a hundred percent AMI person can qualify for. And there is where you get the gap.
Correct.
And that's where you need the funding for that gap in order for that person to actually be able to purchase that unit.
Like, you you build it for five hundred thousand, the sale price to meet a hundred, a hundred percent AMI needs to be two hundred thousand. These aren't usually just fault hurt. And so then, who, what, where is the developer coming up with a three hundred thousand so that you can sell it at this price point? That's the gap funding.
That's right. The difference between that you can sell it for and what it actually costs to build it.
Yes, exactly. And uh, part of the reason why the infrastructure grant happened is to reduce the initial gap. Otherwise, it would have had to have been taken on by the developer, which would have increased the cost per unit. So
Okay.
that's an example of us bidding down, so to say, gap.
And 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 having ownership of the land.
Yeah.
Um, you know, brings down the cost of of building unit. Um, but but I think it's it's wise for everyone in the room to anticipate there's gonna be a difference between what they're selling for and the cost to build them.
So any action item there or more just a heads up?
Okay.
And and that that gap, like, we're talking and uh, twenty, like, latter half of twenty-five, when that's gonna need to get covered. I mean, assuming everything like goes really best.
For the cabinet, I think.
Yeah.
Somewhere. A half of twenty twenty-five and even right now, before any future increases, you're looking at about seventy-five thousand dollars a door.
Yeah, and and the discussion has been that we will pre-sell these units, um, so that we'll get some of um, the money back initially, uh, before they're built. Um, so that helps with financing of the project.
Who was your question to read at the Housing Trust? That was my question to read at the Housing Trust, and he did not answer it. Because because the prices of the units in the rail yard don't, sorry, I don't, I don't a hundred percent, like, the prices, the the where they're listed now do not meet a hundred percent AMI. The AMI?
Yeah, like for a one bedroom, and I don't have the AMI chart with me, I meant to bring it, but I didn't. Um, so an individual is looking to buy um, a one bedroom, and I think the individual, and I could be very wrong, um, I think I think their a hundred percent AMI is sixty thousand nine hundred. Can that person qualify to purchase two hundred and sixty thousand dollar?
Right. And then with variable interest rates, like, at least that's what I'm thinking about on the county project, depending on what interest rates look like, it's going to widen or decrease that gap. We're going to have to be, I mean, I'm I'm like happy to consider like buying down interest rates so that we have a fixed formula for the cost of purchasing or like mortgage, what that mortgage payment looks like to include in our AMI goal. And uh, yeah, I mean.
Which chart do you use to get your?
Um, CHAPA, CHAPAS. And so it's been, um, so.
Is it the one that the DOLA distributes?
Oh, thank you. Um, yeah, and this is.
The one that's sixty-nine thousand.
Yeah, and yeah, a hundred thousand, so one bedroom. That's rents and then income limits. So a hundred thou-, yeah, sixty thousand. Hey, I get a close. It's pretty good.
What's the, what's the sale?
The sale price on a one bedroom is two hundred and sixty thousand.
And what would a?
Is just at that.
What would a person qualify for?
Right, that's the question. Um, and and so I I just wanna.
How long do they get? It depends on what they qualify for. Um, uh, as Sarah mentioned, their interest rate has a lot of factors that go into it. Ultimately, it does have to be under thirty percent AMI, but it's my understanding that currently
Thirty percent.
Thirty percent, sorry, not AMI, thirty percent of their income of the person, I mean, AMI things. Uh, but it's my understanding that right now their employees work um, actively to have um, each individual qualify for the program well before they even purchase it. Um, and that includes uh, pre-acceptant loan things that they go through. So there is a process that they're following, and my understanding is they already have four people who are pre-qualified for the units set up for before they fully go through the purchase. So, you know, there are certainly people meaning that. It's just a question of how they're getting to that point, um, which they have various statistics of, um, including just their model of being a landowner, um, as opposed to selling the whole thing. So, you know, lots of factors that go into it. We don't have to detail with anyone individually, per month or without me, three or four.
The the other thing that I've learned in exploring deed restriction programs or voluntary, what I'll call voluntary deed restriction programs and talking to Summit County, um, that I'll kind of have in mind for the financing of our prop, the county project, is uh, like Summit County partners and and organizations to accept state and federal funding as little as they can, so that they're not restricted by the AMIs, because the 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 approach they like to take is they like, they'll say, they'll decide on an AMI, uh, um, rental or or sale category, like a hundred percent or whatnot, but they'll allow greater than that AMI in the income, because a lot, they just don't want to risk somebody being house poor with being at the thirty percent. And so what they've found is that they need to have people that are making more than that a hundred percent AMI income, affording those, whatever that AMI level is, so that they're actually promoting that, you know, generations and stable housing and, yeah.
Yeah.
Just a different thought on like continuing the subsid, you know, subsidizing project to make sure that we're putting people in situations.
Makes it a more successful project.
Hmm.
Goes against some of the goals sometimes, but it does lead to a more successful project.
And generally, I think that's an approach, even with this new project, we, we're very diligent with DOLA to make sure that we can have some higher income units as long as it averages out to a hundred and twenty. So I think, I mean, maybe it's being too soon, but that's kind of the goal of, uh, the um, initial goal of the regional housing authority. Hopefully, the preseason goal of the county.
Hmm.
I'm trying to open up our mortgage cabinet, but now I'm gonna.
So anything else on gap analysis?
Well, some of the gap is covered by grant funding, for example, the TAP, TAP fees and the infrastructure. So there are there additional grant opportunities there?
There there will be, and there will be strings attached to those as well, so.
Okay, that's kind of what you were getting at, they.
Yeah.
And 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 I'm not saying that don't collect the, I'm just saying if if the restriction is eighty percent, but we actually want people to be in a better situation, then maybe we consider gap funding to like kind of hit like a sixty percent
Gotcha.
mark where the income, because the income is limited at eighty percent.
Yeah.
And so what does that consideration look like? Does that make sense?
Yep.
Am I, like, I mean, if you have a very ambitious, low AMI that is one of the strings of a grant, you can like widen the gap more to.
Right, right.
Sort of like.
I don't have anything else on gap.
Okay, let's. We're on to the IGA.
Okay, so the IGA is, um, so the Housing Director IGA, of course, was created before um, I was hired. Um, there are some things in here um, that the IGA can automatically renew. Um, it can be terminated in sixty days, just some things that I wanted to bring up to the boards and everybody. Is aware. One of the things that we didn't do um, for the um, two-way funding for the Housing Director, um, last year was to um, submit um, an invoice, uh, and this spells out what that looks like. Um, and so we can invoice for um, part of it in January and part of it in July. And and that that's not what we did. We ended up invoicing at the end of the year. So um, I ju- I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention that this document exists. Um, and um, it's supposed to be revisited, and if you have any questions, we should um, talk about it. Um, under this um, document, um, it was intended that two-way fund the majority of the salary, um, with the benefits being paid for by the county with the um, administration of the employee being done by the county. Um, and um, so I just wanted to talk about that because we have never ever talked about it. Um, and then the.
When does that expire?
So it expired, um, December thirty-first of twenty twenty-two. Um, but it renews for successive one-year terms beginning January first, um, following the end of the initial term unless otherwise agreed in writing, um, uh, signed by both parties, and they can both terminate for uh, no reason, uh, with at least sixty days notice.
And we should have a full conversation, because the current structure of that was under the assumption that at the time, we would have a regional housing authority for some time. Uh, the regional housing authority has some conflicting, well, maybe not conflicting, but some updated language on it, um, regarding that position specifically. So it makes sense to revisit that to see if it makes more sense to just modernize it into the regional hous-, or, yeah, to the regional housing authority, um, IGA, or if we want to continue having it, I think it makes perfect sense to have it be some goal at some point to revisit it and modernize it into the IGA with some, uh, uh, some of those, uh, conflicts clarified between the two IGA's. Conflicts clarified between the two IGA's.
What's the other IGA?
Uh, regional housing authority or multi-jurisdictional regional housing authority IGA.
So there's the director IGA and then the.
Yeah.
And the, um, go on creating the housing authority. Um, so that was also a city, county, uh, city-county. Collaborative effort.
That's a multi-jurisdictional housing authority, I do. Or, um, it's a level account, regional housing authority.
And so one of the things I wanted to, um, bring up on the, uh, one creating the housing authority. Is the board has had a conversation about allowing board members to be paid. Um, that would need to be a revision. To happen within the IGA. Just wanted to bring it up that that's something that has been considered. Um, there was also a conversation about having, um, board members, um. Uh, what do you? When someone is unable to serve, there would be an alternate board member and that's not built into this. And we talked about that. If, um, somebody like, it came up when there was a maternity leave situation, would it make sense to have an alternate serve? Um, so those could be, for example, two possible revisions to it. But anyway, I just, I just wanted to bring that up again because we have new folks that weren't involved.
Not having the news unless you try to be terminated.
And that is the end of our agenda.
Yeah.
Well, we have more and more.
And I was in the assessment resident survey distribution.
Okay, so that's, that's, that's a, that's a level thing. So the housing needs assessment, um, the, uh, the root policy research. Is working, um, very hard to talk to anybody who would like to talk about their housing, um, experience. Um, and and concerns. They're working on updating the twenty eighteen housing needs assessment. They did their kickoff. Um, which I felt like was a very well-attended event, um, January twenty-ninth. They've been reaching out to folks since then, um, especially Dan. Um, to get his opinion. And, um, anyway, they're gonna, they're formulating a resident survey that will need to be circulated. Um, they've, they finalized it. Um, with the exception of waiting to hear back from, um, the advocates to see if they have any additional programming that should go on the resident survey. Um, at the end of it. And, uh, they hope to have that if, well, they don't, if they don't get a response, they'll finalize it on Tuesday. We have one month to distribute it and I'm hoping, again, this is another de-risking type question. That everybody will reach out to their circle of people. Um, we will certainly try to get it distributed through the school. Um, we will try to get it distributed through the housing coalition, um, the city, the county, anywhere and everywhere. Um, we only have one month to get it back.
What's the format?
It's, um, they will have it in a digital format. They will have it in a paper format. They will have a QR code. Um, and I'm sure that they, they will be in English and Spanish.
Yes. Um, are you discussing that with Jenny?
Yes.
Okay. I'll check.
Yeah, so so Heidi, um, is the owner of Root Policy Research, has reached out to her.
Okay, I'll mention it.
Sorry, is it, is it finalized?
It's, it's finalized. They're just waiting to see if there's additional, um, programming offered, um, through the advocates that can be, um, included. Um, it, when everybody got, you know, tax bill, um, the county had put together a flyer that talked about additional services that are being offered. And, um, so that information is gonna be in this as well. Um, so all, hopefully all the programming that's out there to help people. Is is gonna be covered. They're, they're trying to do a very thorough job. Um.
And it's the generation. Leading back with roots or whose, whose roots come back from that?
Yeah, so it's a regional housing authority project. Um. It's one of the things that will fall, most likely will fall, obviously, for, you know, like discretion in the future. Uh, under the level again, regional housing authority and. Kind of was part of the intention initially by LC Bank to kind of hand that off to the regional housing authority.
And and it ended up being so that, um, I I surveyed the company that had done it before. Um, they estimated it would cost thirty-five thousand dollars to do an update. Um, we put out the RFP. That company came back at eighty-four seven to do the update. Um, I had applied for grant for forty-five thousand dollars. I thought, oh, I got. Ten thousand dollars extra to cover, you know, inflation, huh, whatever. Um, and so the company that hit it. Um, that was awarded, um, the work was, uh, Root Policy Research. They just did Summit County's. Um, housing needs assessment and they came at sixty-two four. Um, so the grant that I got was forty-five thousand dollars. It was the county application. Um, Anne's, uh, department contributed, you know, fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars last year. Um, and then the county will absorb the difference, um, of the twenty-two five due this year. And then hopefully this is the last one we have to do, but this, um, impacts our ability to apply for grants. Um, and, uh, Dola's talking about implementing a regional, um, needs assessment, so we may not have to do this again. Um, so it felt important to do it well.
Yeah, that impacts our launch and goals and goal setting. Um, we can't really, I mean, we certainly can, but it's not wise to do that without data and. This updates a lot of the twenty eighteen data, which obviously has changed since then.
And any other questions or comments on the needs assessment?
There are some bills on strategic growth that would have thresholds of jurisdiction size that would require every city and county to do their own housing needs assessment.
That's very depressing.
Right. Raise those thresholds.
Dana, Lori, anything, uh, you'd like to add here at the end?
Um, not for me. Just thanks, everybody, for making this happen.
Yeah, thank you very much for, uh, for the partnership and the information.
Thank you, everyone, for attending. It's, it's hard on the evening. I really appreciate it.
I say thanks, especially, I mean, city-county folks. So you have a lot of meetings. This is a beautiful job. But it's really helpful for the.
Absolutely.
I don't even know if this can be considered a meeting. It's only two hours long.
Don't try me, hell.
Before we move on to, I would just like to open up public comment for. This item on the agenda, if there is any public comment about this topic, the regional housing authority. Would anyone in the room or online like to speak? Well, thanks, everybody. It's seven here, the eighth, and this meeting is a journey.
Thank you.